It's 7:05 PM. I call the August 14, 2023 meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. Everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, motivation under God, infinite liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
So we're excited to start this evening with an introduction. I would like to welcome our new interim athletic director, Chris Carboni. Chris, if you could come and join us up at the podium, that would be great. We're pleased to announce the hiring of an interim athletic director for the 2023-2024 school year. Chris comes to us with extensive experience as a coach and athletic director. He's coached track, cross-country, strength and conditioning, and football at the high school level. He's also served as an assistant athletic director at Milton Academy and has been the athletic director in both the Oxbridge and Stone Public Schools. So we're very fortunate to have someone with Chris's background and experience be able to join us here in Carver for the school year. So Chris started just last week. He's very new to the position, but we thought it'd be great to introduce him to the community. And he's really looking forward to the beginning of the season, the beginning of the school year, and working with the Carver community and our student athletes and coaches. So Chris, I don't know if you want to say a few words or...
Yeah, sure. I'm on the spot, so might as well.
Tom can't hear anything? Hold on, technical difficulties. They can't hear us on Zoom, so...
I don't know why Tom can't hear anything. So I said it was Courtney Kennedy. So go there, 88 issue, I think. Because they run the sound through Zoom.
Hold on, I think that's me.
We can hear you.
You can hear me on Zoom. If you turn the Zoom on, you can hear me. Tom, anything yet?
Can you hear us now? It's that Perpetual Verizon commercial. I don't see a response. Let's see, who else is here? Oh, Gina. I know, can you hear us yet, Tom? I would have to think that's a no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it in the chat.
The fan's awfully loud tonight, too, so it was 80 degrees when we walked in earlier.
There's a couple of people attending the meeting on Zoom, so I just put it out to them to see if they could hear us.
In the absence of sound, you can do an introvert.
Yeah.
Okay, you can hear us. Okay, that's great. Thank you for letting us know.
Back in action.
All right, so I just want to obviously thank Superintendent Scott Neef and the school committee. I feel very honored to have been selected to serve as your athletic director for your community, and I'm looking forward to hitting the ground running as we plan to operationalize and put together our fall season. So thank you so much for the opportunity. I've already started to get to work and met with some coaches and some of our students. So again, I'm looking forward to this opportunity. I'm very thankful, I'm very grateful and honored to have been selected to serve in this position for your community. So looking forward to this upcoming school year, and let's make it a great one. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Well, we're all excited to have you. You're so welcome.
Very excited.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thanks for being here this evening.
Sure. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
See you guys soon. Thank you.
Okay, so I know Tom is here, so that brings us to comments from the EAPC.
There's Tom.
Hey, Tom. Oh, now we can't hear you.
I need to apologize for any background noise. I'm on a dead good beat, so it could be a little loud here and there. That being said, I hope everybody's had a great summer so far. We still have two weeks left. I look forward to our new teacher orientation coming up this Wednesday. Unfortunately, we are conflicting open and days this year with Carver, so Tanne will be speaking on behalf of the EAPC in two Mondays. That being said, I hope everybody enjoys what we kind of left of summer, bring not summer itself, and I'm sure I'll see you around. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for joining us and enjoy the last few weeks of summer. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. If you are on Zoom and would like to participate, please enter your name into the chat to be recognized. There is no one in the room with us for me to call upon, so... Okay, no one has entered their name into the chat, so we shall move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one for June 5 and one for June 26, 2023, open session minutes.
I move that we approve the June 5, 2023, open session minutes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the June 26, 2023, open session minutes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. That brings us to communications.
So we do have one communication tonight. We have received our federal audit for our federal grants, and we just want to thank the business department, Ron and his staff, for doing an outstanding job. We had a clean audit report with no findings and saying that we are in compliance with all federal rules and guidelines in terms of our procedures in the business department. So thank you to Ron. I don't know, Ron, if you want to add anything to the clean audit report or...
Clean is good.
Right? Clean is good. Thank you.
Yeah, so congratulations to them, and we appreciate all the hard work of all of our staff in the business office, Ron, Tindall Rocker, Casey Pousha. They've done an outstanding job of monitoring and managing our finances, so thank you to them.
Absolutely, Ron. Please pass our thanks and our congrats on to your staff. We appreciate how hard you and they work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
Okay, so since we last met, we've actually had a lot of personnel movement over the summer.
Correct.
Yeah, so sometimes I get that question of what does the superintendent do during the summer? There's many things the superintendent does, but we've done a lot of hiring, and obviously there's a lot of hiring that's occurred. So this is a review of hires, resignations, retirements, and transfers since we last met. As you can see, the list is a little extensive, but I'll read through everybody in all of the positions. So first, do ESPs first. Sabato Gianna is a special ed ESP at the elementary school. Jessica Anderson has a special ed ESP at the elementary school. Janice Bennett has a math STEAM ESP at the elementary school. I think most of you recognize that name as Janice was a former teacher for the Carver Public Schools, who retired and is going to be doing a part-time ESP position for us. Dagma Ryan is an ESP math and STEAM at the elementary school. Caroline Ray is an ESP in the pre-K at the elementary school. Sarah Corbin has an ESP in special education at the middle high school. Rebecca Perry is an ESP special ed at the elementary school, and Roberta Doyle as a lunch recess monitor at the elementary school. In terms of teaching and professional staff, Jessica Foley as the full-time nurse at the middle high school will be joining Karen Showen. So I know, I just want to stop there for a second just to highlight that, you know, in the end, we made a decision to have our staffing for the nurses be two nurses at each building, so we were maintaining Jessica, working with Karen Showen, so we'll have two nurses at the elementary school and two nurses at the middle high school. Jennifer Lyman is a teacher in grade two at the elementary school. Deborah Keevey is the French teacher at the middle high school. Andrew Morarelli as an English teacher at the middle high school. Stephen Kane as a phys ed teacher at the middle high school. Bridget Ryan is a special education teacher at the middle high school. Alex Tarpe as a special education teacher at the middle high school. Andrew Duley as a TVI, which is vision specialist, that's what that position is at the elementary school, working with some of our visually impaired students. Cassidy Dresopoulos as grade two elementary teacher at the elementary school. Carolyn Burke as a grade five elementary teacher. And I'll stop there for a second, just so that the community and the committee is aware. We made a little shift in staffing over the summer based on enrollment, so it ended up that our K numbers were low this year, so our total K enrollment at this time is 95 students, and our enrollment in grade five is 120 students. The original plan for the year, because remember, we have that grade level of 140 students, so we had the one grade level of seven students. Historically, our staff is six teachers in each grade level, but we've always had a smaller class within the building, and so when the group of 140 came in, we put seven teachers in that grade level that had five teachers in the lower, the grade level with the lowest numbers. And we just weren't sure on K enrollment, so we decided that it made sense, and the elementary administration recommended, and I certainly support, that we're going to do five K teachers in kindergarten for 95 students, which would be a total of 19 students per class. And we're going to do six teachers in grade five for 120 students, so we have an average class size of 20 students. And that will also be able to maintain the teaming model that we have in grades three, four, and five, so everybody will have an English and a math team teacher. So I wanted to highlight that change and that staffing update for the committee and the community.
Thank you.
Nathan Miller as a teacher of mathematics at the middle high school. Tim Murphy is a physical education teacher at the middle high school. Catherine Bramley is a science teacher at the middle high school. Sherry Chaffain as a special education teacher at the elementary school. Nicole O'Neal is a special education at the middle high school. And Hillary Keith as a speech language pathologist at the elementary school. And finally, Chris Carboni, interim athletic director, who we just met. Historically, we do invite all of our teachers to the first meeting in September, so in our first meeting back in September, we'll invite all of our new teachers, and we'll have the principals introduce them to the committee and to the community. So we'll continue that tradition. We also have had a couple of transfers because we had some positions that were available that our current staff members had some interest in, and we've decided to support them in making that transition. So Karen Booth will be transitioning to a technology ed teacher, replacing Tony Roder as the middle school technology teacher at the middle high school. Brandon Kingston is making a shift from a third shift custodian at the elementary school to a first shift custodian at the middle high school. Holly Hoffman is going to be transferring from food service cook to our food service manager at the middle high school. Nicole, sorry, Morgan Nice as a bus monitor to ESP job coach at the middle high school. Rachel McGinnity is an ESP special ed to an ESP kindergarten at the elementary school. And Heather Stagnita is going to be transitioning from a special education teacher to one of our reading teachers at the elementary school. We do have one retirement to announce this evening, so I'd like to thank Phyllis Bowie for her 17 years of service to the Carver Public Schools as the athletic director, and obviously, we've met Phyllis's replacement for this year, Chris Carboni. We also had a few resignations over the summer. Rebecca Hewitt as a reading teacher. Kyle Shabino is an ESP special education at the middle high school. Kendall Fowen is a first grade teacher at the elementary school. And Janet Scatfordoni as the food service manager at the middle high school. We still actually have a couple of open positions that we need to hire for that we're hoping to finalize in the next week or so. So we'll have, I'm sure we'll have a little bit more movement between now and the opening school, sorry, the opening of school, and we'll introduce everybody when we come back in September. So any questions about personnel updates and changes over the summer?
Nope. Thank you for that update. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Just going on to our next report, tiered focused monitoring, the TFM report. So we're happy to have our Director of Special Education, Melissa Leary, and Meredith Erickson, who are kind of the lead team in overseeing what's called our tiered focused monitoring process here this evening to talk a little bit about what tiered focused monitoring is, and then the report and the findings we received from the state in regards to our, basically, Melissa's going to hit this, but I guess I just need to say it, that tiered focused monitoring is, that's used to review of our compliance with state and federal special education laws and state and federal civil rights laws. So welcome to Melissa and to Meredith, who are going to take us through our TFM presentation.
Thank you. So I'll start with just an overview of the process. So over the course of the 22-23 school year, Carver participated in the tier one TFM process as a Group B district. So to initiate the process, a self-assessment was conducted, which entailed us reviewing specific criteria set forth by the DESE and an evaluation of our district's ability to meet each standard, ensuring that we have compliance with our laws, the laws and regulations. So document reviews were conducted, as Mr. Neef said, in both special education and civil rights. So within special education, there was a focus on licensure, professional development opportunities, our facilities and classrooms, oversight, and parent and community engagement. Within civil rights, there was a focus on time and learning and equal access, and through our analysis, we reviewed our policies, our procedures, our practices, in order to provide evidence on our attainment of each of the various standards. So with regard to special education, I was responsible for assessing and ensuring that our department maintains the following practices, so that we have properly licensed special ed staff, we provide translators for students or families that need it, given different languages. We have a comprehensive evaluation system for our special education program reviews, so ensuring that all of our special education programs are evaluated, making sure that we are really supporting our various students' needs as they evolve over time, ensuring that we provide special education professional development to all of our staff, and ensuring that we have community and parent outreach and involvement. And then additional areas within special ed were just to make sure that we're really evaluating our assistive technology for our students and making sure that that's a factor when we're developing their IEPs, also ensuring that we have inclusive special education classrooms and facilities, overseeing the implementation of our IEPs, accountability for our student services, and financial responsibility, and also evaluating our discipline data to really ensure that we're not, that there is not any disproportionality of special ed student referrals. So that was a lot of the focus of our self-assessment for special education, and I'll let Dr. Erickson talk about the civil rights components.
Thank you. So before I go into civil rights, I just want to say that this process takes a couple of years, so even though they come and they do a site visit, they typically have you submit your self-assessment at the end of the previous year, and that study takes about an entire school year to be able to do. And even though we coordinate it, it's many hands that are involved, so principals, administrative assistants. Gina helps me organize everything because there are tons of different indicators, and you have to have multiple evidence, including school committee policies and all of those things. And then on top of that, the website has to be up to date because they also will go in and look for those things on the website. So even though we're here representing this work, the reality is it's a huge lift for the administrative team and many of our administrative assistants and educators. So the other thing that Melissa referenced is that over six years, all the standards are covered, but really, there's two different groups, so it's like every three years, they come and new a different group. And in each group, both civil rights and special ed are represented, but in Group A, special ed is kind of heavier in terms of what they're looking for, and civil rights is lighter. And in Group B, which is the one that we just completed, civil rights has more, and special ed has a lot too, but less than you do in Group A, so...
And not to interrupt you, but the thing that happened to us is that our three, we were supposed to be, our third year for the last round was supposed to be the COVID year, so it got delayed a year. So we actually just, we actually did both rounds in almost a two-year process. So we've actually been at this a little bit straight for four years because we did our self-assessment, then we had a site visit, then we did our self-assessment, then we had a site visit. Really, I guess the break in there was the COVID year. It was supposed to come. So we did a site assessment, COVID year, which kept us busy. So actually, this year's going to be nice because for this next school year, we don't have anything specific to do for the TFM process, so people will be happy about that. Sorry, Matt.
No, that's great. Thank you. So as it mentions on the slide, the intention of the civil rights analysis, again, with lots of different indicators and lots of different artifacts demonstrating compliance, is to assess and ensure equitable opportunity for all, including protected classes. So especially those of you that were on the policy committee last year, you probably saw the protected classes over and over again, or if you work in human resources, you'll notice that a lot of times, language, and this is federal language that extends beyond the schoolhouse and into many workplaces, but protected classes include race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, and so they want to make sure that there is no discrimination for those type of things in terms of access. So one of the biggest components of that is evaluating curriculum for bias and demeaning generalizations. Every teacher in the district, every administrator in the district had the opportunity to get trained on how the key moves that they make on a daily basis ensure that we are checking ourselves for bias and that there's no demeaning generalizations in there. So it was great, lots of dialogue occurred as department chairs and as elementary lead teachers and administrators worked to help train faculty on that. Additionally, we make sure that all of our compliance trainings that we do every single year, that we turn in attendance sheets, and we ensure that all faculty and staff are trained, so that includes custodians, food service, transportation, ESPs, administrators, so on and so forth. So we have to make sure that we provide evidence of that. They also look at our schedules and structured learning time, and then do a review of our handbooks, which you review every year. They look at discipline data, as Melissa mentioned, and then our suspension and restraints, and make sure that we're not disproportionate in those areas. And then they check to make sure we have a full range of educational programs and accessibility, everything from making sure that documents are translated to making sure that maybe protected classes or underrepresented students have fair access to curricular activities and participation at every level. It also covers things like students that may have dropped out, making sure that they know that they can always come back, and we send letters for two years after that date to make sure that they know that they can come back and complete courses. Fortunately, we do not have a large number of students that fall into that, but that's kind of the gamut of everything that we cover and make sure that we have documentation for. So it's a lot of handbooks, a lot of policy, but then a lot of lived documents that we use in our day-to-day operations.
Excellent. Thank you. So the next part just talks about a timeline of the process. So as we said, in October, we had our self-assessment that was submitted, and we had a district orientation meeting with the TFM team. In November, they provided feedback to us. In March, we had parent surveys that went out to all of our special education families, and there was also a virtual parent orientation presentation. And then in April, there was an onsite visit, and in June, we received our final report. So with regard to all of the different steps, I'll kind of go through each of them a little bit more specifically. So after our completion of the self-assessment, we submitted it in the fall. The TFM team reviewed our evidence and provided us with feedback for areas that needed more follow-up, so then we continued to gather more materials and secure those so that the self-assessment process would be complete. In April, there was an onsite visit where they met with Carver administrators and took tours of our buildings, looking at our special education classrooms as well as our MLL classrooms. They hosted various interviews. The TFM team also met with our CPAC president to secure feedback from parents and families about the special education services and civil rights within our district. Following that, there was an exit interview, which was held really to just review the initial findings and provide feedback. So they did provide some recommendations to us, and over the course of the spring, we worked to ensure that they were all met. There was a follow-up site visit in June, and then a summary of the findings was provided to us that really demonstrated that we were compliant in all of the areas, and no corrective action was recommended. So we received readings of implementing for all of the standards assessed, and we were really grateful to hear that feedback and know that we don't have to do any more follow-up. So that's basically it. I don't know if people have questions about the process. It is involved, but I think it's helpful and meaningful and provides a lot of feedback on the things that we are doing and gives us insight into where we can kind of continue to move forward.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I'd just like to thank, obviously, everybody involved, as Meredith mentioned. You know, it wasn't solely the work of Melissa and Meredith. They organized it for their two areas of compliance, but obviously, a lot of people's efforts went into really the self-assessment. The hard work comes in the self-assessment and providing all the documentation to the state for them to review, more so than the site visit itself. And we're excited that, you know, they found us to be in compliance with all regulations.
That is excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone that was involved. I actually read the report. I found it to be quite interesting, so all the hours and hours and hours. So thank you for your dedication, and it's really great to see your hard work and efforts pay off, so thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Meredith. We'll continue on with Dr. Erickson, who's going to kind of give us an overview of professional development plan for faculty and staff the first couple of days of school. You know, so staff will be returning on Monday, August 28. There'll be two days of PD, the 28th and the 29th, with students returning on the 30th.
Thank you. So this will be really brief. I don't have a PowerPoint because I'm just going to cover a couple of plans that we have. And so just kind of the underpinnings of this, I want to start by saying that there's obviously a limited number of full professional development days that we get with our teachers each year, and so this year, we have two at the beginning of the year and then one in October, and then a teacher choice day in December. And so we really value the time that we have at the beginning of the year. By contract, a half of one of those days is spent with teachers preparing in their classrooms. So for the past couple of months, administrators have looked at data, looked at school improvement plans, and really looked for alignment in terms of, as we action plan and we look to make district and school improvements, how can we make sure that our professional development time is used in accordance with that to support teachers in that work? So as tradition has it, at the very beginning of our two days, we have a district-wide welcome back and a keynote from Superintendent Neef, and a breakfast, an opportunity for everybody to connect and to hear kind of the vision of the year. And then we have some building time where principals and assistant principals are able to present to faculty and set the stage for some of the most important work that's going to be done throughout the year. And then at the middle high school, the afternoon of the first day, they'll be doing some technology updates and then talking a little bit about restorative justice, and then segueing into a huge component of the work that will be done there this year around our NIESK decennial accreditation. So that work has been going on for the past couple of years. We had a collaborative conference in 2022, and, yeah, in the spring of 2022, and then we'll have our decennial visit in April of '24. So a key component of that has to do with updating curriculum and making sure that it's aligned with vision of the graduate. So that will take a bulk of time at the middle high school. And then at the elementary school, because Open House is actually going to be on that first night of Monday, August 28, teachers will get their classroom setup time that afternoon, so that half of the day. And then on Tuesday, the 29th, the work will be dedicated to the continued phase in implementation of the new literacy program, and in grades three through five, continuing work on Bridges strategies with the Bridges math curriculum, but really with an emphasis on differentiation and universal design for learning. So a group of math teachers met this summer and read the book called Building Thinking Classrooms, and that will be a key component of looking at differentiation. Additionally, our arts and therapists will have some behavioral support training and working on helping children with resilience and culturally responsive practices, and then an opportunity to discuss roles and expectations for students that are on education plans, and an opportunity to have a crisis prevention intervention refresher for staff that needs that. So it's a packed couple of days, but it's intended to align with school and district improvement. So in a couple minutes, you'll hear from Superintendent Neef, who will be talking about our educational blueprint.
Thank you, Meredith.
All right. Thank you very much.
The educational blueprint. We'll transition right into that. Senator Meredith, you probably should reverse these. I had the blueprint go first before the PD. So I just always think it's good at the beginning of the year to take normal to with the community and with the committee to discuss this document that we call the educational blueprint, which is really our foundational document of what our goals are and what we want to achieve as a district. And, you know, when I first became superintendent, seven years ago, I went through the new superintendent's induction program. And the creation of what they like to call a one-page document that summarizes your goals. And they really, through that induction program, which is run through the Department of Education for new superintendents, I'm already off-topic from where I wanted to go, but that's what happens, is that that program was created because they felt that there was a churn of superintendents within the state of Massachusetts. And they said, we need to create a program to support people into the role. And my biggest takeaway from that program was, they really sold the concept of, instead of having a 35-page strategic plan that sits on a shelf, they said, you want to create a one-page, you want to create a one-page vibrant document that people can see and connect to. And that was how the educational blueprint came about. And the first year was an intensive process where I went out and interviewed staff and community members and parents, and talked about, what do we see as our vision, and school community members, what do we see as our vision? Where do we want to see the school district going? And I went through a similar process a couple of years ago. And the concept is, this is your document supposed to be living and breathing, that every two or three years, you kind of do a deeper dive into. So we're probably getting close to time to do another deeper dive, especially coming out of COVID. And we did, I said, we did that actually the COVID year, and there was a sense of, let's keep these same core objectives, because they really are what school's about. So I'm not going to read the whole document to you. I'm just going to highlight a couple of key pieces for the community. You know, first, I just want to highlight really a tagline that we developed, which is down the bottom, which is cultivating empowered learning and responsible citizenship. You know, just a one statement, this is what we want to be about. We want our students within the Carver community to be empowered learners and responsible citizens, to believe that they can take their education and take that education anywhere and apply it anywhere in any field. You know, it's that whole concept of, many of us probably have jobs today that maybe didn't exist when I went to high school, or maybe we didn't envision them exactly what they looked like in high school. And you just want to provide students with a set of skills that's adaptable, so that 25 years from now, they can be successful in the things that are going to exist that we can't imagine right now. And that's that whole bigger picture concept of cultivating empowered learning and then responsible citizenship, making sure we're connected as a community, as a society, and we're all working to support each other. So how do we do that? Hopefully, we're going to do that through these core values of, all students can be successful, learning is ongoing and lifelong, decisions should be made in the best interest of students, everyone should be treated with dignity and respect, school, home, and community partnerships are vital for continuous learning and growth. And certainly, these are always areas we're looking to improve on. You know, we want to develop community partnerships, and we probably have to do a better job of community partnerships. We have to keep building that. That's not a stagnant thing. It's something that should always be growing and expanding, as many of these things are. So from these core values, as a community, we identified kind of our key objectives, our four rocks a little bit. And those four key objectives are, support safe schools, to sustain a safe supportive -- so I am going to read the four core objectives. To sustain a safe and supportive inclusive learning environment, and ensure that we are addressing the physical, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all of our students, to maximize students' capacity to achieve. So safe schools isn't only about being physically safe, it's about providing an environment in which all students feel comfortable and connected. Again, that's a lofty goal. It's something we always have to be striving for. Certainly, I can't say that that's a goal, yeah, we've achieved that goal, let's check that one off. And, but that's, in some ways, is, this document is supposed to be aspirational. It's supposed to be saying, this is where we want to be continually driving. And I can't think of a better thing that we want to be continually driving for than sustaining a safe and supportive environment that's inclusive of all of our students to maximize their capacity to achieve. Now, next up, there's a list of initiatives, of things that were currently happening within the schools. We've made, the administrative team over our summer retreat, made a couple of adjustments and initiatives to add in some new ones, and some of them are ongoing. There are things that have been in place, but they're still there. So I'm going to only highlight two here, which was, the first one, increase student-staff and community sense of belonging by strengthening school climate. We always want to have initiatives that's improving our climate within both of our schools. And then several bullets down, provide informational assemblies and resources for students and families around the topics of social media, bullying, and inclusion. I think that's something that we always need to be, to moving forward to and progressing towards. Engage the community to foster relationships with the community, so that parents and community members are engaged partners in the educational process. Here, I'd like to highlight two of the initiatives, which is, increase home support by strengthening parent-teacher relationships, developing and analyzing events that encourage school pride among students, faculty, and staff. You know, and I think over the last couple of years, we've actually added a couple of events that were community-wide, community-based, and we want to keep doing that, we want to keep growing that. We really want all of our parents, all the members of the community, all of their families, all of their loved ones, whoever's supporting our students, to feel like they can reach out to us and be part of us. And sometimes that might just be participating in the recorder concept, in the things that happen at the elementary school. Or it might be coming to the football game on a Friday evening. Or it might be attending a gymnastics event, or coming to a celebration of one of our projects, project-based learning events, or what's happening with our pathways programs, and celebrating those things. But we want to keep giving different opportunities where members of the community feel like they can be engaged with what's happening within our school. You know, obviously, maybe the foundational, the most important thing is always improving our teaching and learning. Sustain a system-wide environment where exceptional instruction and student achievement are the core of our work, and realized through collective action. So a couple of things I'd like to highlight here is continue the development of the pathways program to ensure college and career readiness, including adding an eighth-grade exploratory. So we are excited about, we're going to do an eighth-grade exploratory for pathways this year, so our eighth-grade students have an opportunity to get connected to each of the pathways and get a term experience within them, which hopefully, the goal would be to have the students and the parents have a better understanding of what the pathway is actually, and what the opportunities are available for students. And, because I think that's something we're still working towards with the community, is having fully, people fully understand what we want them to achieve out of the pathways. Some students that might be very career-focused, and they might say, I'm really interested in the biotech piece, and I'm going to focus there. And other students might just take some of the electives that are offered and may not be in a pathway. Because I think one of the things that's been miscommunicated, and not purposely by anybody, it's just, you know, people's impressions from conversations, is there's still a little bit of sense from some students of, I have to be in a pathway. You know, I have to be in one. And they don't have to be in a pathway. It would bugg you to be in a pathway, and he wants us to be in part pathways, but it's not a requirement, you know, to attend the school. And if you're just going to take a couple electives in a different, a couple of different places, because we're offering these new opportunities, that's great, and that's outstanding. But we're excited about the eighth-grade exploratory, so everybody's going to get, in eighth grade, everybody's going to get a touch of each of the pathways. Ensure the Carver Middle High School vision with graduates communicated to all stakeholders as embedded in the written curriculum. So the middle high school team has gone through the NIESC process of establishing a vision of the graduate. And so we want to make sure that gets communicated to the school committee, to the community as a whole, to all the students, and to see how that document is living and driving what's happening with instruction at the middle high school. And then implement common planning time at Carver Elementary School for educators to review ongoing data cycles. So we're going to be able to build in some common planning time for our elementary teachers. We're excited about that opportunity this year as a new opportunity, as a way to enhance our teaching and learning. And finally, leverage leadership policy and funding to strategically support the school community with mindful leadership and sustainable funding to ensure the highest level of student achievement through well-managed resources. And the only piece I'd highlight there is, we're going to continue, and thank you to Dr. Erickson for the great job she does in this area, and Ron as well, for his management of all of this, is seeking and obtaining grants to, that impact teacher and student growth. You know, so we're always looking for grant opportunities. And the district over the last few years has really brought in a significant amount of grant money from different resources to support our programming, and we're going to continue to do that. Because by having those opportunities funded through grants, that takes pressure off the operating budget, takes pressure off what our needs are from the community, and supports expansion of our programs. So going back to the beginning, the goal here of this one-page statement, which hangs in all classrooms, we'll be putting an updated version together and putting that out to people, and hangs in the school, and we want it to be out there and to be a living document to say, this is what we aspire to. This is what we're constantly moving forward towards. This is what we want to achieve as a district. And there's always work to be done in these areas. But this, if we're doing these things, if we're supporting safe schools, if we're engaging the community, if we're enhancing our teaching and instructional practices, if we're leveraging our leadership policy and funding, using the money the best way we can to support students, we're going to have great outcomes for our kids, and we're going to provide opportunities for our students to achieve great things. And our students do achieve great things, and we want to continually be building upon that. So thank you for taking, giving me a few minutes to kind of share this vision. And I guess I'll take any questions or comments in regards to the educational blueprint.
That is wonderful. I'm glad that you had some time over the summer to update it. Like you said, it's a living, breathing document. Assuming it'll also be on our website, in case anyone in the community wants to look at it, if it's not there already. Thank you for that in-depth review, and to everyone that had, that took part in continuing the development of that. It's great to hear. I'm excited to see what this upcoming year holds, and to continue to have the opportunity to celebrate student success here as much as we can.
Thank you.
So thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Outcoming events, we're excited about the start of the school year.
It's coming fast and furious.
It is. We've actually highlighted several of these events already in the meeting, but we do have new teacher mentor training coming up this Wednesday. We do have the Fall Student Athlete Parent Meeting on the 22nd at 6:00 for all of our Fall Student Athletes. And obviously, you know, Mr. Carbone will be leading that meeting and working with Mr. McGuinness and Mrs. Cabral. So we're excited about that. We do have a second day of orientation for our new teachers at the building level next week. So the teachers are going to get two days. They get one day as a district and one day within their buildings. As I think Dr. Erickson mentioned, we do have, oh, I'm skipping ahead. On the 25th, we're doing middle school orientation for sixth-grade students, and a grade-nine orientation for ninth-grade students, new high school students. The sixth-grade orientation is a new event. Yep, so we're excited about that. And, yeah, I think parents are excited about that. So that is on Friday, the 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00, with the ninth-grade new student orientation in the afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00. So thank you to the middle high school administration for putting those dates together. Welcome Back Day for Staff is on the 28th at 8:00. Certainly, all the members of the school committee are invited to attend breakfast and the presentation afterwards. You know, obviously, I know work schedules may make it difficult to do that, but certainly, you're welcome to attend. You don't need to tell me if you're coming, you're just more than welcome to be there. You don't need RSVP. And then the evening on the 28th, which I think we started a couple, two years ago, just last year was the first year of Ruby, of doing Welcome Back, Back to School Night.
Last year, we combined it with Five Years Classroom and the teacher.
Yep. So that, that, last year was the first year.
Previous years to that, we just had Go Five Years Classroom, and the teachers were there. That was so fun.
So we thought it went well last year to do the Back to School Night on the, prior to school starting, and on the teacher's first day. So we're going to be doing 5:30 to 6:15 is Back to School Night for students in grades three through five, and 6:30 to 7:15 will be Back to School Night for students in grades one and two. And then obviously, we're all excited about the first day of school on August 30th, and continuation of case screening. Probably a lot of parents are excited about the first day of school, ready to send them back. We do have kindergarten orientation at 10:30 and 12:30 on September 5th. And September 6 is our first day for pre-K and kindergarten. And then that brings us back to our next meeting, which is September 11th at 7:00 at Town Hall. And then there's obviously a couple of events there for September. We took you through the whole month of September, but I figured I'd take you through our events that are happening up until our next meeting. Yeah, so we're just all really looking forward to the beginning of the school year.
Yes, that is a jam-packed schedule.
It is. I will admit, I've been singing "It's the Most Wonderful Time of the Year" to my daughter, who's very upset about it.
That Staples commercial is just classic. It is classic. Thank you for that. My goodness, bittersweet, bittersweet. So that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
So first, we have budget transfers and financial update closing out the FY '23 school year. Ron.
So hello, everybody. I've got a brief update for you in FY '23, and then we'll talk a little about FY '24. It's a busy time of year for the folks in the business office, because we're straddling two fiscal years for a few months. And it's typical for our monthly transfers, we try to balance off all of your budgets. This will be your final account balancing for FY '23. You can see all of your budget for FY '23 all in on the first tab. If you scroll down to the bottom on that very first tab, you see your total budget for the school year, $21,400,000 and change, your total expenditure, and then your balance of $57,881.39. That'll be your final balance for FY '23. That's considered your turnback. It's about a 0.3% turnback for FY '23. Those funds will ultimately go back to the town of Carver. They'll typically be re-appropriated at the next town meeting, rolled over to free cash, which ultimately goes to typically pay for capital improvements across the community, across the town. You have the summary of transfers on the next tab. If you just want to take a look at that, you can see how we balanced out the books for the close of '23. Overall, it's a good financial year, able to do a lot of good things here in the community, a lot of good things with the school department, and still manage a balanced budget. I'll answer any questions you've got for FY '23, and request that you vote to approve this, so we can get it over to the town.
Anyone have any questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I move to approve the final FY '23 transfers as presented this evening.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's always wonderful to end the year not in negative. So I know that there are many districts that aren't as fortunate as we are, so we greatly appreciate that and recognize that we are very fortunate, so.
The next item I have for you is your monthly financial memo. It covers a couple of major updates. The biggest one really this year is from Beacon Hill. As I'm sure you're aware, right now, they finally passed an FY '24 budget, which is exciting. About a month or so overdue, and they had to pass some supplementals to float the whole thing together. But it worked, we got it done, across the finish line. It's about a $56 billion budget. I have some highlights for you that I'll give you here, and then open up to any questions that you've got. So a couple of the major highlights on the education side of things. I think one of the first ones is that, you know, that much anticipated millionaire's tax was really fleshed out in terms of how they want to utilize the funds. And the large majority of it is to focus on education and the Commonwealth, which I think we all agree is a good utilization of those funds. I won't go through all of it with you, but probably the biggest highlight is to codify the Universal School Meals Program. It's something that's been in the works for a few years, I'm sure you're aware. Sort of started as a COVID layover, continued for a few years even after COVID. And then after the federal government sort of closed that program, Massachusetts stepped up through some supplemental budget action and covered the costs for a couple of years. But because it was built in the supplemental, we were sort of going year to year to see whether or not this was something that was going to be codified into the actual operating budget. So we're really excited to see that it's going to be in FY '24's operating budget. I want to be sort of plain with all of you. It doesn't mean that it's permanent. Any line of appropriation could still be vetoed or redlined. Any, any line of appropriation could still be vetoed or redlined, just like, you know, any other line for the state budget. But adding it as part of the budget rather than supplemental is a really good step in the right direction ultimately. So kudos and many thanks to our lawmakers to see that as a priority and focus on that investment. Some other highlights from the FY '24 state budget, as you can see there, Chapter 70. So as you may remember, back in February, we were talking about where the state stood in terms of the governor's budget and the two House budgets there, the House and Senate budget. The governor proposed continuing to increase the Chapter 70 funding for the Hold Harmless Communities. Carver's one of the 119 Hold Harmless Communities. Essentially, we get the minimum amount of increase each year for Chapter 70. So they've continued to double it, they've done that for the past few years. That was something that we already built into our revenue projections, so we're happy that the governor and the two chambers were able to agree on that. So you see that in our FY '24 projection and that's where we landed on Chapter 70. Circuit Breaker, a general reminder about Circuit Breaker, it's a program and part of the typical budget where the state sets aside funds for communities, communities like Carver and other communities and municipalities in the Commonwealth, to utilize these funds to offset costs for special education. I have a link there for you if you want to do a deeper dive into Circuit Breaker. But long and short is, Carver utilizes these funds every single year to offset some of our costs for special education, typically out-of-district tuitions is what we use that cost, that, those funds for. In previous years, the state hasn't always funded that to the maximum capacity and we're happy to report that they have this time. Again, that was part of the governor's initial bill, so that was built into our budget as well. The next one is a little bit unique. Again, hearkening you back to our conversations over the winter, you know, we, we were surprised, I think, as many communities were, when OSD, Operational Service Divisions, a component of the state government, they approved a 14% increase in the tuitions that some of these private special education schools can charge, communities like Carver. It's a pretty substantial increase. I totally appreciate there is inflation and everybody's got to increase costs because everybody's costs are increasing. 14%, I think, took a lot of communities by surprise. And so, anyway, thanks to some advocacy by a number of state associations, Massachusetts Association for Superintendents, certainly for school committees, school business officials, special education directors. The state, as part of one of those supplemental budgets that kept the state afloat while they were doing the FY '24 budget, appropriated $75 million to offset that 14% increase in special education tuitions. We're still awaiting some guidance on the mechanics of how those funds will roll out. We expect it's going to be similar to how Circuit Breaker and Extraordinary Relief were rolled out, so we'll keep you posted on that. But again, that's a great investment that supports communities like Carver, who really got hit hard with a big increase in our special education tuitions. You don't typically handle a 14% increase in anything very easily, so we're happy to see those funds supporting us.
Wonderful, absolutely.
Last few highlights on the budget, homeless transportation was fully funded. Again, that's a set of funds that the state reimburses communities who provide transportation for students who are classified as homeless. We've had an uptick in homeless population in general and homeless population services in general in our community. So again, these funds, we're able to utilize to offset some of those costs, which are a great benefit for the community of Carver. The last one's charter school tuition reimbursement. Again, that's reimbursement funds, tuition mitigation payments essentially under the Student Opportunity Act. For a student who lives in Carver but ultimately attends a charter school, the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth has built as part of its laws, a mitigation fund. It's essentially three years of mitigation tuition payments at a per pupil basis. So if that student goes to the charter school, the town of Carver still receives tuition payments, 100%, 60%, 40% of the per pupil tuition for that kiddo, even though that student is still at the charter school. The appropriations, 232 million. And again, similar to Circuit Breaker, that hasn't always been fully funded, which jams up communities quite a bit and often creates tension between districts and charter schools. So having that fully funded appropriation alleviate some of that tension, also supports school choice across the community, across the Commonwealth. And the last bullet, as I said already, Universal School Lunch, I think that's probably one of the biggest wins in the budget overall. So that's the 10,000-foot view of the budget. I have some links in there as well. You can see a fine-grained detail of some of the press releases that were put out, as well as the bill itself. And the last thing I have for you are just your warrants. You can see your quarter four final warrants for FY '23, as well as your first quarter warrants for FY '24. As I said, the next couple of months, we spend sort of straddling these two fiscal years. There's a lot of information. If you have any questions, let me know, we'll do a deeper dive.
Anyone? Thank you for that succinct breakdown and for also providing us the links. It's always great to have access to that information, so we appreciate you providing that to us.
Sure. So moving on to our preschool fee structure. So happy to have Dr. Naomi Stahl with us, who's Elementary System Principal and Preschool Coordinator, and Ron. We're going to talk about a process that they went through last year to make some recommendations to some changes in our structure of the fee schedule for students in pre-K.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Hi, thanks, everyone. Hey, you were probably thinking like, whoa, she never stays this late, right? This is your trick, put me at the end. So just to give you a little background, our preschool program at the Carver Elementary School, I feel is amazing and very unique. It's a developmentally appropriate learning experience. We serve our youngest, you know, student-ready kids in Carver. There is, you know, just this great opportunity to have positive and memorable experiences in the school. Our new classrooms are beautiful. We have experienced well-qualified teaching and support staff that are actually trained in the curriculum that will be used throughout the building, so it really gives those kids an advantage that they have bridges math experience and handwriting without tears. And the population is basically children who exhibit disabilities, balanced in the integrated model with typically developing peers or role models. And so Ron and I are going to talk a little bit about the role models because those are our students that we expect to demonstrate those age-appropriate skills. And we do a lottery program, we screen them, we want to see that they can really serve as examples to the other kids in the class. And our peer model students that are not selected are placed on a waiting list. So what happens is they, we usually have more applicants than we can, can accommodate. The peer role models pay a fee, which Ron will explain, and the families are required to, are expected to provide transportation too. There's a two-day program, a three-day program, and a four-day program.
Great.
As Naomi said, the model students are the only students that'll pay a fee. The rest of our students who have disabilities go to the program for free. And if you take a look at the memo I've got for you, you see on the second page, it just shows you the current fee structure. And one of the reasons we're here with you today is just to refresh that fee structure that hasn't been, you know, evaluated in several years. As Naomi mentioned, there's sort of four different programs, a two-day, a three-day, and then two different versions of a four-day, a PM and an AM. You see the number of days that you have in the current fee structure as it states now. It equates to about 12 hours a day, and it does have some variation with the PD days and holidays and those sorts of things. And there's a few challenges with the way the district has currently structured the fee structure, which our working group has tried to alleviate. The first is simply that the costs haven't changed and kept up with the rising costs to provide the program to our kiddos in general. Our preschool program costs about $650,000 a year. We project, if you remember back to our budget work in the winter, we project about a $40,000 tuition offset. It's about 6% of the total operating cost, so it really is just a drop in the bucket. But that drop in the bucket helps balance your budget ultimately. And those costs have stayed static for several years despite the increases in staffing costs and materials costs and so on. The other challenge that we've had with the structure itself is that because it's been communicated and structured on this daily rate, we're constantly recalculating this. It's both a jam-up for families and a jam-up for the school and district administrative teams, because there's this back and forth with families regularly about the number of days. My kid was out for a sick day, do I have that day off? Like, we're doing that work a lot. So we've been working with, looking at some comps to see what does the sector do in general? We've come to find out that a large majority of the sector has a flat fee for the program and it's simply prorated if a student is a model student who then is identified with special needs. Otherwise, it's not daily rate, yeah. One of the last things we found with the current fee, we wanted to really address, is just the way that families are able to pay the fee. So currently, families send in lots of different means of payment, but it includes cash, check, and money order. It doesn't include online. And so we wanted to move to an online payment opportunity for families. It's not required, and we want to be transparent with families, that when you pay online, there are convenience fees that the Carver Public Schools do not receive, but that your MasterCard or credit card or whatever card you type in, that's how they make their money. That does exist with that. But I'm a dad, I use that to pay for my kids' everything. And so to be able to have that option, I think, would behoove our school district and I think it'd be convenient for a large majority of our parents. And the other thing that we would like to move to, or again, away from, excuse me, is accepting cash. So we do accept cash for some things with the school district, that's typical, but accepting that large amount of cash is really just not good financial practice. And we even have situations where, like, kiddos show up to school with cash in the backpack.
A preschooler.
It's not a great mechanism, and so we want to move away from that and encourage families to send a check if they need to or a money order, and really encourage families to go online with it. It's really secure and probably the most convenient. So those are some of the challenges that we saw. We brought together a working group, you can see our process to review. We had parents and staff members and administrators at the school and the district level just evaluate where we stood with our program and what that fee structure looked like. We took a look at comps, we found about 10 comps that are community-based, district-based in our region, within a, you know, geographic region here, including Carver. We found that Carver was the least expensive of the 10 by quite a bit. It ranged from a little over $3,000 to Carver's. So we were at the very bottom in terms of cost. We also took the comps for private preschools. And we made those separate because we recognized that private preschools offer some different services that we don't offer necessarily, but also they're really in a different price bracket than we are. And you'll see their, their costs are three and four times the cost of what a community preschool would cost. So we wanted to understand that because we wanted to make sure if we were to change the cost, that we were still very affordable to families ultimately. That was the purpose of spending the time looking at those comps, yeah. And what we landed on, if you take a look at the bottom of page two, the proposal, is to maintain the same four structures, AM, AM programs for two, three, and four days, and then a PM version for four days as well. The number of days remain the same. And you now see round figures for each of the annual costs. It equates to about an additional $1 per day, so going from about $12 a day to $13 a day. We recognize that does not make a massive dent in the total operational revenue and offset, we acknowledge that. But at the same time, we're a public institution and the intention here is really just to try to offset some of those costs and have some skin in the game in the program ultimately, which is what I think the intention does there. You can also see that as part of the proposal, we require that families put one-third down. Again, those are the families who are going to be model students. As Dr. Stahl mentioned, we typically have a waitlist there, and it sometimes jams us up where families say yes, but then they don't want to do it. And so that one-third is really just, again, some skin in the game, yes, we're interested in this, here's some money down. The mechanism then would allow families to pay as they, on a plan that they saw fit. So if they're paying online, they can pay in five payments or 10 payments or two payments. It's entirely up to them, based on whatever their family needs are. Again, I want to be transparent, if you do 20 payments, those credit card companies, they charge you with the, like, fee every time. So I want to be upfront with people about what that is and what that isn't. But it also could be if you wanted to send in multiple checks once a month, like that sort of thing, there'd be lots of flexibility to do that, right? The last thing in terms of that proposal is, it would be a flat fee. So again, if you see the, that first line there at $900 a year, that would be the fee for the program. And the only time you'd have a prorated structure there would be if a student was a model student who then ultimately was identified with special needs, and we would do appropriation based on the number of days. I also want to just say, sort of at the front, we always work with families for extenuating circumstances, so if there's a situation where a family is in need, our district always works with them, not just in preschool, just in general. When it comes to money, if there's a spot where a family's in, they reach out, we're here to work with you to find a way to make sure your kiddo gets what they need and set up a structure that's reasonable for the taxpayers and reasonable for the family that's involved. So that wouldn't change, that's why you see that last, you know, sentence there at the end of the proposal. We'd always continue to work with families, but we would move away from this sort of daily recalculation to that flat fee structure. I think I kind of covered the rationale, you see that on that third page there. Dr. Stahl, did I miss anything? I sort of rambled on there for a little bit.
No, I, I think you did a really nice job. I, I really appreciate it. And it was, as Ron did say, there were parents involved, one of the preschool teachers. And one of the things that I, one of the reasons I really wanted to change the language of the pro-day, what, and just call it a tuition or tuition fee, something like that, is because I feel like it's just more respectful. I just feel like when you're looking at the teachers and the staff and it's not babysitting, this is, you know, a well-qualified staff and we would just want to give them that sort of, you know, dignity and sense of importance that this is a, you know, it's not a pro-day. Every day matters, every minute we're with your kids matters to us, so.
Absolutely, well said. So what we'd request the committee, if you have any questions, let me know. And what we'd request of the committee is simply an approval on the fees. We would then work with the logistics on setting up the online payments and those sorts of things, but any fee change obviously has to be approved by the committee.
And the, the program, I just want to interrupt briefly, we did speak, and the parents seem to appreciate that the program we'd be using for online if you chose to buy school books.
Yeah, it's the same program we use for lots of other things.
That's excellent.
That's great.
Yeah, families for field trips and, you know, second lunch, like those sorts of things, yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing it up, I forgot about that.
I said, oh, we'll get you started right now.
Yeah, yeah.
High school will thank us, right?
Yeah.
How many students typically attend the program?
So between, so of the four programs, about anywhere between eight, 10, 12, ma, well, about eight of them in each program would be a role model student, so.
Okay.
So it's about.
It's averaged over the past three years, you're at 29.6, so about, yeah, about 30 kiddos a year.
In each set, in each session?
Total, 30 model students.
Total, preschool, yeah.
Preschools, yeah.
Yeah. And of those children, some of them do end up on IEPs, so the tuition stops when that happens.
And then how many people typically get waitlisted?
There's, there's usually about, I don't know, it could be between five and 10 that are wait, it depends on how many. What happens as the school year goes on is they've had to make other arrangements, so when you contact them, they kind of dwindle away. And the other thing is, is we are not a daycare, so it is just, you know, about two and a half hours per session. So a lot of families do have to make other arrangements for their children. So that's why when we looked at the comps, we had to be really careful that we were comparing preschool programs to preschool programs. So, I mean, as the year goes on, we definitely lose our options for role models. But as they get old, so it, it's a tricky thing for preschool because it can be like an open enrollment sort of thing. So as soon as you turn three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. You're eligible. So we'll periodically have people calling. We try to keep like, so for like this coming school year, we did our biggest screening of role model students in May. But like I said, as the school year goes on, people have to make their arrangements and we totally understand that, but more kids are turning three.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a rolling interest.
Interesting.
Yeah, and in general, the last several years, preschool, we serve about 72 to 78 preschoolers total. So that gives you an idea of the role model numbers you just mentioned.
About half, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a fantastic program.
Thank you.
It really is. And I, and I just noticed, like, oh, I think that's what I paid back in 2018, because my daughter.
I think it was, were you?
Yeah, I think so. I think, yeah, this is definitely a good move.
And I really tried to be thoughtful last year and just observe and just kind of think about how, you know, I, I really got to know every program. I was sort of in a unique situation as a kindergarten teacher that did inclusion. A lot of these kids came to me and, boy, do you appreciate their exposure to curriculum, their exposure to the building, the rules. There is a big difference between, you know, kids coming in from no experience, different experience, and experience, and coming from our preschool. I mean, I had always appreciated it, but now I'm in the room, you know, more often with the kids, and I get to see, you know, how hard they work and how much they grow. And that is a tricky thing too, to have new children beginning, you know, periodically, that's not, you know, what most teachers have to do. And like I said, the screening process is pretty thorough. We worked, I worked with Mrs. Leary this year, we met with the preschool team, and we came up with role model criteria, things that we really want, you know, as kids, as families change, what we wanted to look at and focus on, to really make that clear that this is, you know, these are things you can be working on, and Gina helped me put it on the website, and so we could share that information with families. So it was truly a group effort of really just getting to know and appreciate everything this preschool does for our kids. It's a great start.
Thank you so much for all the effort, because we've been through it, and I think it's a great program, and it's only going to get better.
Yeah, I think so too, thank you.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Well, I would move that we approve the new pre-K fee structure as proposed this evening.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both for all that information. Thank you to everyone that was involved in that program, I wish we could, I wish we could expand it.
I do too, it was fantastic. And it's a lot of those kids' first introduction to, to our school system.
Right.
And it couldn't be a better one. And I did send my daughter to a different preschool before I was.
Well, thank you for that. Okay, so that brings us.
Final agenda item for tonight.
Yes.
Policy FFA memorials. When we approved the entire policy manual in June, we actually adopted a new policy, policy FFA in regards to memorials. It's short, so I'll read it. "The school community recognizes that the death of a student, member of the staff, or prominent community member is deeply felt by the school community. As places designed primarily to support learning, school sites should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials. Permanent memorials within the school shall be limited to, sorry, sorry, should be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. Any permanent memorials in existence before the adoption of this policy can only be removed by a vote of the school committee." So Shane McColligan made a wish to the Make-A-Wish Foundation to have a cherry tree planted at the middle high school. The administration has been working with Shane's family and the Make-A-Wish Foundation on a proposal to have that cherry tree with a plaque planted in Shane's honor on the island in front of the school by the flagpole in the fall. If approved by the school committee, the middle high school administration will work with Shane's family to plan a dedication ceremony for the community. To have this happen, we have to suspend this policy. So if the school committee is interested in allowing a memorial to go forward in honor of Shane, and to have his Make-A-Wish of planting the cherry tree on the school grounds, what would have to happen is, first, we'd have to have a motion to suspend the, suspend policy FFA memorials. And you can make it very specific, you can say, you're suspending this policy just to consider a memorial in honor of Shane McColligan. And if you did that, in essence, then you could, policy would be suspended, you could have a discussion of whether you want to approve the memorial. If the committee makes a decision to approve the memorial, then the policy automatically goes back into effect, because the only motion was to consider a memorial for Shane McColligan. So that's the process the committee would have to go through, if you're interested in doing that. But to move forward with the memorial, we would have to take a vote to suspend the policy and then take a vote for the committee to approve the memorial. So that is the recommendation of the administration, that the committee move forward and at least consider placing a memorial for Shane McColligan at the Carver Middle High School.
So can I go ahead and move that we suspend policy FFA memorials to consider a memorial in honor of Shane McColligan?
A second.
The only thing I did want to mention is, suspending a policy does require a two-thirds vote, so you do need a vote of four in favor to move forward with consideration.
Yes, and it also needs to be a roll call vote as well.
It also needs a roll call vote, two-thirds.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, I'll just start from my left.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Holly Zaduski, aye.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously.
I move that we approve the planting of a cherry tree and the placement of a plaque at Carver Middle High School in memorial to Shane McColligan.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? This can just be a.
This could be a straight vote.
A straight vote, correct? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. So I will, I will let the administration know that you made a decision to allow a memorial. Mrs. Cabral has been working directly with Shane's mom, and they'll move forward to plan a ceremony for the fall, which certainly will make the community and the committee aware of as that planning moves forward. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just looking it up, is there any, like, weather criteria for a cherry tree?
So we did, we did do a little research on that. So since this is happening through Make-A-Wish, Make-A-Wish is paying for the purchase of the tree, the planting of the tree, they're coordinating the planting, they're paying for the plaque, so they'll, not that it matters per se, but there'll be no expense to the school district, or to the family, or the community for the planting of the tree. And they did actually say that the fall is the best time to plant the cherry tree.
Is it, is it flowering or fruiting?
That I don't know.
I kind of, it looks like both, they could be both, I don't know.
Yeah, well, it could, usually they plant, like, in this area, flowering ones, so there wouldn't be fruit, it would just be beautiful blossoms in the spring. But they, they might do a fruiting one.
That, that I don't know, so I don't have that information, but I can find that out for you. But yes, we did, we actually talked to an arborist, and they said that the fall, September is the, late September is the best time to plant the tree.
Exciting. Okay. We, I'm sure we all look forward to hearing when that is and having everyone have the opportunity to attend.
Yes, once we have more details, we'll let the committee know. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And that is the last. Item on our agenda. So if anyone wants to report anything, or if people just want to adjourn, I know everyone, I'm sure, wants to get home, it's 8:22, this, this could be close to a record for us. Quickly, I just want to, I just want to say to everyone, enjoy the last few weeks of summer, soak up every moment that you can. And I want to say, I want to send well wishes to all of our recent graduates for the class of 2023, who are heading off to their new journeys in college this week. I've been seeing a lot of goodbyes on Facebook, and I'm sure everyone joins me in wishing them well. And we look forward to hearing some of their stories back around Thanksgiving when they, when they come back, so. We, yeah, we, because we don't, we meet the 11.
September 11.
Yeah, so everyone, please, please, please be respectful of the buses. Please, I know it will add time to your commutes, but please stop for them. And I think bus information will be coming out soon, I've seen a couple of people asking online, so.
Yes.
Shortly.
Nearly done, but I don't have a date for you yet.
Okay. And, all right, is that going to be shared on our website? Because I know we don't have the Carver Reporter anymore, so I know that's where it used to be published, so on our website?
That's correct.
Okay, so if everyone could please stay tuned to the website, also to your emails. I'm sure there'll be more information coming about the start of school. Anyone else? Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will, I move that we adjourn.
A second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, until next time.
All right, everybody, thank you.